Okay, we'll call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, August 2nd, 2016 at 7:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, Pigly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Okay, item number two, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. Item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. If we have somebody signed up, they're welcome to come up to the podium and speak. Now, we'll have a five-minute limit for comments, and you can start as soon as you get up to the microphone.
My comments are very important to my wife and myself. I'm going to ask to speak for more than five minutes. It will not be more than 10. I'm asking the council.
Actually, I set the time limits for the speakers, so if you think you can keep it to 10 minutes, then it will be strictly 10 minutes.
Okay, if not agreed on the papers. My name is David Lottier, 229 Garden Lane. I am, if this microphone screwed up, say so. I am the husband of Aldo Nancy Lottier. The agenda says services may speak on any subject the council can act on or be offering a specific recommendation the council can take. I also believe the council can act on this tonight under Agenda Item 10, which is the general item, which the mayor has used in the past to bring out non-agenda items. I will be reading a prepared speech, have several points I wish to mention, and keep them in logical order. I also do not want to make the council listen to long-winded meaningless nattering that I'm sometimes subject to. I'm going to lay out the background as I see it, make a specific recommendation the council can act on, and make a final comment. I'm going to ask several rhetorical questions, but I'm not going to ask your answers at this time. Actually, the people I've been asked the questions of, I don't think are here. I'm also going to try to be very careful to make clear what I know to be a fact, or if I'm making an assumption, or giving my opinion. This is the other reason for a prepared speech. Now, this is going to be basically on the actions being taken against Nancy. Our attorney had to resign because of a conflict of interest, so we're in the process of giving an attorney, but before he resigned, he read over these notes and saw nothing I could not say in public. Also, as a side story, if I'm limited to strict 10 minutes, when I called him about this, he said, "I can't believe you called me." He said, "I was reading about this in the paper this morning," and I said to my wife, "They can't do that." But onward, I am here to discuss the underhanded, malicious, unprofessional, scurrilous way the accusations have been brought against Nancy. It is one of the dirtiest ambushes in the history of small government that I know of, and I would not want not to bring justice, but to embarrass Nancy and to bring glory unto other people in the council. There's a great deal of animosity in this governing body. Some elders have a disdain for the mayor and the mayor for them. Some elders have a disdain for each other. Healthy debate and different opinions are good. The spite in this chamber is not. It starts with the leadership or lack thereof. When the mayor was elected, she had the right to nominate her replacement in the council. She nominated Jeremy Zajak, a campaign backer. Jeremy is on the county board, and the mayor is a county employee. The mayor gave the council very low notice and Nancy none at all about this appointment. When Nancy asked the mayor about this, the mayor said she forgot. Really? You only had five. Now, I had to rewrite this several times. Now, she appointed Jeremy for a two-year term, which was okay because it was a two-year thing, because this was just going off the board. She could have also appointed for a one-year term, in which case 2,000 people could have voted for who was going to be on the next board. I'm using the number 2,000 people because of the number I got from the Wisconsin Blue Book Governor's Race, which I looked up while researching the Wisconsin rules for the recall of a municipal official. That shows you how mad I am. Now, so Jeremy goes, we had a visit the other day. I'm apologizing to you like I did before. You did nothing wrong. You accepted the appointment. That's fine, that's great. I've told you that before. I don't want to bring any names, except that's the fact, that I don't think that she did it the right way. Okay, moving on. This time went on, Nancy felt she had a question regarding the financial transaction of the cities. She asked the banker about it, which was her right. She was in no way, I repeat, no way questioning the propriety or the ethics of the banker. She's only looking at the city's point of view. The banker, a person whom we admire, who has done a lot for the city of Milton, understood Nancy's intentions and notified the city official. Misunderstood Nancy's intentions and notified the city official. There are times when a conversation with Nancy can be confusing, and I'm more than anyone in the room can understand the banker's misunderstanding. Sometimes elected officials have questions, like Nancy, have questions they feel need answered. Nancy could have handled the situation much better by speaking with the parties involved by going further. Due next to this, in a closed session, the mayor asked the council to remove Nancy from office for the sin of talking to a banker. After a very short discussion, the council dropped the matter. I contend this is the perfect setup for Mayor Welch. If the council laughs off this ridiculous charge, Nancy cannot talk about it, but word would leak out, and Nancy would be the subject of discussion, not the mayor. And if the council in some moment of insanity agree with the mayor, the news would be public. The mayor had a low-lease situation, and she knew it. She had Nancy either way, and she knew it. Now, who was hurt with this disclosure? No one but Nancy. She had not disclosed any other proceedings. She had not given out any closed-session type of information, and so on. She only talked about Nancy. Now, can anyone up there with the possible exception of Ryan, because he hasn't been on very long, can anyone up there honestly say they have never at any time talked to anyone about anything that happened in a closed session? No, you've all done it. I can go to Charles Barber Shop and get more information, public and confidential, than Nancy ever told me. Have any of you ever talked to anyone about what happened in the closed session that led to this debate? A closed session is like a sieve. Things leak out, and sometimes somebody puts a big hole in it, and everything pours out. Just because Nancy talked about it does not give the rest of you the right to discuss it. I know some of you have done this. Those who have discussed this are in violation of the same charge they have brought against Nancy, except Nancy only talked about Nancy. The other person did not talk about themselves, they talked about Nancy. Last Tuesday, Nancy, or Aldo Ryan, were so long months before the meeting that the ethic charges were brought against her. The item was vague, if not deliberately misleading. Who wrote the agenda by this way and under whose orders? How would any of you like to see your name and picture on the front page of at least three papers with the words "Ethic Charges" in the headline? Nancy and I both feel the reporting was fair and accurate, given the information they had at the time. Who notified the mayor? Gus Brown Town points to one person. We went to the State Coach Friday night to visit a local businessman, you all know, and his wife. Their first question was, "Who is your accuser?" And she was dumbfounded, but at the same time, I said, "I don't know," and Nancy said, "We don't have a clue." So, so far, we have not seen anything in writing. Now, why would this accuser, the person who brought these charges, not have the common courtesy, the common sense, the common decency, or the moral courage to call Nancy and say, "We have a problem." And I knew, now we do not get along, but we need to discuss this. If that were to happen, the matter would have been settled. One phone call. Instead of calling Nancy, somebody called the Gazette, and we know this because they called Nancy and asked about it on our tape, and it was vague. We didn't know what they were talking about, but we sure do now. Instead, Nancy was ambushed in what I feel is one of the most unethical, immoral, and spiteful actions of every witness. I contend the mayor and Linda Clark used Nancy's personal mistake as a cheap excuse to remove Nancy from the council, which is probably contrary to state statutes. This is the type of excuse the Nazis used to invite Poland and Putin to invade the Ukraine. Now, local level, the mayor's actions are just as deplorable. Why bring this matter up in open session this time and closed session last time? I contend it was dumb to embarrass Nancy. They laid in wait for Nancy like a couple of jackals looking for winded pry. They have now found out that Nancy can fight back, and she has a husband who can fight back and have the resources to. You're all saying right now, her husband can be a son of a bitch when he wants to be. Nancy asked directly who brought the charges, and the mayor said, "The council."
Dave, I would ask you to refrain from using vulgar language. Thank you.
I'll be happy to do that. How much time do I have left?
One minute.
Okay. I might ask for two more. Nancy asked directly who brought the charges, and the mayor said, "The council." Aldo, Shreve, Zajak, Adams, and Nancy, and I'm assuming Ryan by Manchester Haskins, had never heard about this before in the meeting. How could the council bring it? Aldo Clark apparently was well informed ahead of time, and she was insigurant of telling the mayor about the news article. There's a definite political overtone to this. There are a lot more questions I could ask, but I want to move on to the actions the council can take. I had four proposals, but Nancy's attorney suggested I go the most logical one. Lucky for the mayor, the first two would have really scorched her. I'm asking that, I have the impression you could sell us, Mayor, tonight, but I had a courtesy phone call from the city attorney, or two city attorneys, and he says, "Not an agenda item." So, what I'm asking for, Mr. Attorney, can any citizen ask for an item to put on the agenda?
Certainly, a citizen can ask for it. It'll be up to the council or the staff to put it on there, so you can request it.
Thank you. I'm asking the council to put on the agenda for the next meeting, an item regarding this whole mess of Nancy, and asking that they drop the charges. In my personal opinion, the mayor's actions were so much worse than Nancy's. Nancy may be guilty of jaywalking. The mayor is guilty of character assassination. Now, I wish this could get done tonight. Now, if this doesn't get done, we are going to fight this all the way. It's going to get worse, and that's going to get wider, and the problem will get deeper. If the problem gets deeper, it'll be like a pulse or digger. It's going to dig and twist. When it gets done, it pulls up dirt.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Your 10 minutes is up, and we can.
I can either finish it or you can write in the paper.
Thank you for your comments.
I can either finish it or you can write in the paper.
I don't want to discuss your threats. Thank you for your comments. Please sit down.
You can read the rest of the paper. Thank you. I didn't even get to read your own words on the paper, do you?
Thank you for your comments. Please sit down. You're out of order.
No, I'm not sitting down, I'm walking out.
The Common Council will proceed with the matter that is dictated by our ordinance, and we will follow our procedures, and we will not discuss this until our procedures are followed. Item number, there isn't anybody else listed. Item number four, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Item number five, discussion and possible action regarding bids received for 2016 pavement projects, the municipal drive drainage improvements, and the maintenance of stormwater areas.
Last Thursday, we opened bids for the 2016 projects. Those projects that we opened the bids for were the South Pressure Zone Booster Station, Municipal Drive Storm Sewer, and some various street projects, Chicago Street repaving, reconstruction of the portion close to the ethanol and County M section of Chicago Street that needs repaving. Cerns Road also, and Woodcrest Drive, the portion that was affected by the water main. The three bids all came in below budget. Each bid did receive three different bidding companies for them. Frank Brothers was the low bid for the Chicago Street Merchant Row Parking Lot, you know, the Chicago Street area, and the Cerns Road and Woodcrest Drive. Municipal Drive Storm Water Improvements, those are to clean out the stormwater ditch from Hilltop Drive to the railroad tracks on Municipal Drive. That, it's the original ditch that's there, so it's over 30 years old. Mike Nails Excavating was the low bidder for that project. The South Pressure Zone Booster Station was the final, the actual installation of the booster station. The equipment's already been bid out and purchased, and that was Gilbane Construction. They were the low bid for that project. All three of the bids came in under the original estimates. Or, if they didn't, on the street projects, there may have been one part that was a little higher or lower, but all of the street projects combined came in under the original estimates. So, it was just to request permission to get the contract signed to have these various projects done, and they're scheduled for 2016 completion.
I was just wondering, Howie, are we going to have that, the municipal drive ditch, will that be done before school starts?
No, that probably won't be done. It'll be done during school. That would, it probably won't be done until almost middle of October.
I was actually wondering, Howie, about the bids there. I noticed that one seems to be, the lowest bid seems to be far below the others. I just wondered if our engineers kind of checked in, made sure everything is covered on that bid.
For the municipal drive storm sewer?
Yes.
Yes, they did.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, and he's done work for us in the past, and maybe being local might make the price difference too, as well. Oh, and so I guess if you, the action would be to award the three bids.
Is there a motion to award the three bids?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number six, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 216-26, authorizing purchase of property and execution of closing documents.
The item before you tonight is the potential acquisition of a parcel that is located adjoining King Park to the west of Green Hill Circle. This property was brought to our attention by the Rock County Tax Foreclosure Process. Annually, they come out with a list of properties that will be going through the foreclosure process. We generally review those properties to see if there are any properties that have any public utility. More often than not, there is not a property that meets that criteria, but if there is, we, as a municipality, have the right to first acquire the property before it goes through the full foreclosure process for the amount that is due in back taxes. This property came before us, and we do feel that it does have a public interest in that it is a property that is largely undevelopable, that would be difficult to have any access to but for easement. And it's currently developed, it was currently undeveloped, but heavily wooded and used, you know, well, not used, but provides a buffer and an aesthetic kind of connection to the park. Our fear on staff is if this property was to retain or return to private ownership, we wouldn't have any control over the property. The property could potentially be developed, or the property could have the trees removed from it. For the small cost of $1,000, we thought it would be appropriate for the city to take ownership of that, have that be extension of King Park, and be able to maintain control over that property and to ensure that that wooded area, that natural area maintains in that condition, which most of the neighbors have been accustomed to for the last, you know, 50-plus years. So, again, we would be asking for authorization to purchase the property through the Rock County Tax Foreclosure Process and execute the closing documents. I will note that Plan Commission did review this and forwarded a positive recommendation to the City Council as well.
I do have, in watching the discussion at that level, there was a mention that it precludes the three owners that back on this weird-shaped little triangle from purchasing it for, to extend their own lots. Is it possible to allow the three adjoining owners to purchase it so that they get to clear up the dead ash trees?
I think under this process, what we could do is, if we execute our right as a municipality to purchase the property through tax foreclosure, it would preclude them from having an opportunity to bid on the property on the courthouse steps. However, we certainly could make that property available for sale upon our acquisition to one of the adjoining property owners. That would certainly be a possibility.
I would, I would think that that would be at least an equitable offering. Whether they choose to do it is another story.
Is, is the easement given by all the property owners that are along there, or how?
How would you know the specific property? No, it's only one, the easement runs through one property and would be used for access.
Runs between.
Runs between two, yeah. Yeah.
I had understood one time when I saw it for sale several years ago, that one of the Green Hill driveways could be extended into that lost triangle. Do you recall anything?
That's where the easement is.
Okay.
It would be a separate, on its own driveway that would go across those two properties.
Most awkward, but yes.
Yeah, it, yeah. That's where it would come from, those, Green Hill Drive, or Green Hill Circle.
May I recommend that the city go to purchase the land, but offer the right to purchase to the three adjoining landowners, should our purchase go through?
Is that your motion?
Yes, that is.
Is there a second?
I just have a question for.
Okay, wait, wait. Before you go, is there a second to this motion first, so we don't get confused? The council's been confused lately. Is there a second to the motion? If there's no second to the motion, the motion dies. Is there a second to the motion?
I move to approve Resolution 28, 2016-2026, just for the city purpose.
Okay. Okay, so the previous motion has died because there wasn't a second, and Dave has made a new motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion or questions?
Just a comment, for people, I think it's valuable to be able to add that to the part, what the public does private, what property owners are gaining out of that.
I also, I agree with that too, Dave, but I was wondering from Mark, if you, I mean, if the Plan Commission made a recommendation as it was, can we change that recommendation?
The, as I understand, it was merely to, they recommended that it be appropriate to acquire the property, but that, and that's their role. So, then, the exact action taken by the council is up to the council beyond that.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the water rate study.
I put together a short, two-page memo that outlines a few new questions that they ask, that the Public Service Commission asks when doing a rate study, and I tried to describe what each of them are. I'd be happy to go through them. Otherwise, we can just go to the questions, and we can get the answers. Is there a preference?
For the sake of the public that might be listening, I think that we should try to elaborate a little bit so they understand. It's quite a hot topic.
So, there's a couple, couple of questions. The first one is in regards to the public fire protection charge. That is a charge that has been on the water bills for a very long time here. It's to help maintain the fire hydrants and make sure that proper funding is available to provide adequate water pressure in the event of a fire emergency. This charge is currently a charge to all businesses who have water service within the city and is based on the meter sign. One of the questions before you that is different than in previous years is, do you wish to bill non-customers, like those that don't have water service, such as vacant parcels or stormwater-only parcels? And then, if so, in discussions with some of the PSC staff, there's another nuance that I did not realize, is you can count contiguous undeveloped parcels as one parcel, or you can treat them as separate individual parcels for the purposes of a public fire protection charge. So, that'll be the first part of the question that I kind of spell out in the recommendation. So, we'll just continue on. And then, the next part comes to the actual water usage and the charge. This is based on how many thousands of gallons that an individual business or resident uses. We currently have what's called a declining rate structure. We have very few residential customers that actually hit that second tier, because 22,000 gallons in two months is an enormous amount of water. But, the declining rate structure means the more you use, the less you pay for that next increment of water. Some modifications that some municipalities are doing now. One is called a uniform rate structure, which is typically only applicable to residential and multifamily residential, where regardless of the amount of water that's used, they pay the same rate. So, it doesn't go down if you use more water. And from what I can tell, no municipality has used that kind of rate structure for commercial, industrial, or public authority customers. The other one that is used by some municipalities is called an inclining rate structure, where the more water you use, the more you pay for that next tier of water. So, my recommendation, I don't really have a recommendation, but I, but I spell out those three questions to, for you guys to make that decision. And then, after we get done with that discussion, we can get down to the last part of that memo. So, the first question is, is does the council wish to bill non-customers, those that don't have water service or vacant parcels for public fire protection charges?
Well, I think that we all know the, the needs of our fire department, and.
This has nothing to do with the fire department. This has to do with maintenance of our water system.
Right.
Why the Public Service, why the Public Service Commission calls it a public fire protection charge is beyond my comprehension.
What would you call it?
Maintenance of the hydrants. And to provide adequate water pressure to ensure, like I spelled out in the top part. But, this is the language that we have to use, so that's why I use it.
I don't think that's going to change my, change what I was going to say, anyway.
I just didn't want it to sidetrack from what the.
Right, but fire hydrants, fire hydrants are something that, that maintenance on those things are very important. If you have a fire on your street.
Right, but that's handled by the water utility. That's not anything that the fire department maintains.
Right. The fire department doesn't maintain it, but the expense of maintaining those is still something that we have to do for the protection of our citizens.
Correct. Yeah. I just don't want people to get confused when they, they get confused when they see public fire protection charges, thinking that they're a portion that goes to the fire department, which it does not.
I saw a newscast, not, probably a year ago, about a subdivision that had a fire, and the fire department hooked up to a hydrant that was not working. And there was a house that burned. It was down in Illinois somewhere. I guess I, I feel like the, we have to, we've got to maintain these hydrants, and if you, if you own a parcel, chances are, you still could have a fire where you would need that hydrant. I mean, that's my own personal opinion, for, for the first question.
Yeah, we're going to do one question at a time.
Do we have a lot of parcels that don't have water service in the city?
I want to say there's 20 to 30 stormwater-only parcels.
And are they undeveloped?
Some of them are, some of them aren't. We would have, if you guys say yes to question one, then question two becomes applicable. And depending on what the answer to that is, we'll have to drive around the city and come up with our, you know, count which contiguous empty parcels.
It's the houses that have septic tanks and wells, too.
Yeah, they, they would get a stormwater charge, though, if they're in the city.
But, I mean, they're part of your.
The houses, you also, if you have this charge, it's the houses that have septic tanks and wells, then they also pay part of the hydrant fee, because they're served by getting water out of the city system. So, they're included besides just vacant lots. Otherwise, they wouldn't be.
Right. Okay. Right now, anyone that gets any. Right now, anyone that gets any kind of water service to the city would get the charge already. This is just talking about those that aren't, that basically don't have a meter in their house at all. And I want to say there's 20 to 30 stormwater-only accounts in the city where there's, what that means is there's some, some improvement of some kind on a parcel, whether it's an outbuilding, whether it's an actual full-blown house, but there's some sort of improvement, but they are not hooked up to the city water lines.
If you charged the vacant lots, how would you do that? It wouldn't be the same charge, would it, that you pay for a home?
The Public Service, the Public Service Commission said that they would probably just base it on the, it'd be the same as like you and I would pay for our single-family home. Because it's, it's based on the equivalent meter.
In having had, I bought a foreclosed house that was sitting empty, and I found it very annoying to pay for having no water go into the house, but to pay for the rates. But I recognize that you do have to have the service. I don't really agree that on undeveloped land, that it would be applicable, at least from my point of view. Unfortunately, you've got an empty house, you pay. And I wish it had a better title saying, "Maintenance of the Water Service," or something.
Right.
Because it is frustrating.
Well, and that's where question two kind of comes in. If this body does decide to do a, a charge for non-water customers, the contiguous undeveloped, if there's like five or six undeveloped lots, and you want to treat that as one, they would just get one charge as opposed to five or six. That's the purpose of that second question. To alleviate some of that concern, like if you're talking just grass, is it really appropriate to charge $20 a month, or every two months for a public fire protection charge on six lots that are next to each other undeveloped?
That does bring on a great deal of frustration.
But right now, there are homes in the city that don't get water service, that don't pay that, that public fire protection charge to. I thought it was a really interesting question on the PSC, and I had a 45-minute discussion about all these various questions with one of the PSC staff members. It was pretty enlightening.
Do you know what other communities have been doing with this question?
Said it's been about 50/50.
Like you see, like you see these-
Microphone.
You know they are drawing water service, paying for the fire protection, service a little higher maintenance. Would it be necessary to check their property?
It would be kind to have the term hydrant maintenance appear on the billing because it is frustrating.
Yeah. Do we put hydrant maintenance in parentheses? The PSC won't let us.
The tariff says public fire protection charge. I don't think that's a fight I want to fight.
Can't put an asterisk, asterisk at the bottom? This what, this is what it means? Okay, is there a motion on question number one?
Yeah, I move to have the charge applied to non-water.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion?
Maybe this is the next question that we're going to get into, but does this then include vacant pieces of land with nothing on it?
It would, because those would be non-customers, but then that's where question two comes in. If they're contiguous, then we can choose to treat them as one parcel or multiple parcels. So unfortunately, what that decision means is if you have one empty parcel surrounded by two, a home on both sides or whatever, then that one parcel would get a public fire protection charge.
My question is, there's, for example, two, two lots right near my house. There's no homes on there. There's nothing for you to save. So would those properties then be included?
But if they're contiguous, then the next question solves the question on if you want, if you want to treat it as one big parcel or the two little ones that-
By the same owner.
Right.
But I mean, if a fire started in a vacant lot, let's say kids started a fire, we would, we'd still have to put it out and we'd have to save the other houses around it, too. So there's a motion and a second. Any further comments or discussion?
Do you, do you-
Good response. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. And we're going to go to question number two. Do you wish to count contiguous undeveloped parcels owned by the person, entity as a single charge? Or do you want to charge each individual parcel?
I move that we charge them as a single charge.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number three, for residential and multifamily residential rates. Does the council prefer a declining, uniform, or inclining rate structure?
What is the norm in the, is there a norm in the state for-
It, it's starting to change. Like Madison has went to an inclining. Other communities have done a hybrid, which is basically the uniform rate, where everyone pays the same rate regardless of the volume used. It's starting to shift, but I think more municipalities are still in the declining because those other two are still relatively new concepts. You see it in the areas, in the municipalities that are really trying to push water conservation.
So that the uniform rate is what's currently in effect?
Nope, we have the declining.
Declining, okay.
On page two, it shows what our existing rate structure is. Our first 22,000 gallons, and then the next 88, et cetera.
So the declining actually incentivizes you to use more water?
That's the concept. Because once you hit, Carrie says, I mean, in the summer, we might have two or three customers that actually exceed 22,000 gallons that are residential.
Residential.
That are residential.
So inclining would actually reward you for water conservation?
Right.
Minimally.
Yeah, I, rewarding, I, I know the point you're trying to make, and maybe it's not worth it. I don't know if rewarding is the right word to use. It would incentivize you to not use more water because you wouldn't pay a higher rate. I just want to be clear. I just don't want somebody to say like, "Oh, I'm going to get rewarded for not using more water."
You are, because you won't pay as much money.
Right. Okay.
The carrot and the stick approach. So is there, is there a motion?
I guess I make a motion that we switch to the inclining rate structure to help kind of incentivize people to conserve a little bit of water.
There's a motion and a second to switch to inclining rate structure. Is there any further questions or discussion?
You talked about just a handful that go, that exceed that level. We had a monstrous pool in our backyard. We filled it up every summer, so it's not there now. But the family that does do that is going to have to pay more in order to fill their-
Yep. And I, if we, if it has ultimately decided to go to the inclining, I don't know what the Public Service Commission will deem at those various steps. I don't know if the 22,000 gallons will stay 22,000 gallons. It could go up, it could go down.
Seems like the water is very high.
Yeah, except that's a, that's a piece that we don't really have a lot of control in.
The PSC doesn't let us vote on that.
The, the- I got it. For that inclining rate, is that, is that for industrial and commercial also?
Nope, this would just be residential and multifamily residential. I'm proposing that the declining holds steady for commercial, public authority, and industrial because it's pretty tough if you're in industry. No one has went to the inclining or uniform anywhere in the state on those three. I asked that specific question. And we do have a couple of heavy water users, and it would cost them dearly.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, what is next?
Did you want to discuss the rest of the slide enough before we-
Yeah, okay.
So I, I threw this, these last three paragraphs on because the, the rate application was filed last Friday, so the public docket, and it was accepted yesterday. So anyone that is actually looking up stuff on the PSC website could find the rate application filed. So I just wanted to let this body know that the rate application shows that revenues or expenses, normalized expenses exceed anticipated revenues by about $247,000, which is 22% over the anticipated revenues. However, we, until the cost of service study is completed, it is impossible to estimate or predict what this will mean for public fire charges, water meter charges, and volume charges. So that, that number 22% is on the application, but what exactly that means, we won't know for probably two to four months when that cost of service study is done. But I also want to emphasize that that shortfall is not an operating cash flow deficit or anything like that. That's taking rates of return on our assets to account for annual maintenance and replacement of the water system. And this is largely driven by the $2.5 million in water projects that are being done right now. So, so that is, that is the driving force. But the utility is very healthy, otherwise I would not have made a recommendation to take several hundred thousand dollars of cash out to pay off debt 10 years early. That was two weeks ago. That was a refinancing piece.
That was the three quarters, was that the three quarters of a million in savings?
This was a piece of it.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. We're going to number eight now.
Yep.
Does anybody have any further questions? Everybody understands? So if you get a question, if your neighbor asks, you can talk about this, if you're okay with it. Okay. All right, item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding middle school resource officer agreement.
So in fall of 2015, I was approached by the school district, and we were discussing the fact that we have a full-time school resource officer position. That's currently Jim Martin, who spends most of his time at the high school. Before my arrival, there was some need at the middle school to also have a school resource officer on a part-time basis, and that was done by Jim Schumacher. And that was done basically on a handshake, and there was some questions about expectations and roles and things like that. So about the time I arrived here, the conversation with the school district involved, well, let's formalize that a little bit so that we know what the expectations are by both the city and the school district. We put together a memorandum of understanding that, an agreement, however we want to phrase it. And so we basically, at the end of September, early October, finalized the language, and then nobody signed it. So it was, it was a miscommunication and a shortfall on both sides that it never came to either the school board nor this body for review and approval. But it was found at, as they ended their fiscal or their school year and doing contract checks and stuff, that, you know what, we never signed this and we probably should. So I bring this to you tonight to take a look at and approve, and that will basically approve how we operated in the 2015, 2016 school year. We followed exactly what was in this agreement. We are going to be continuing discussions with the school. Dan and I have some questions that we're going to go over with the school district to consider some other financial pieces as it relates to benefits and such to the, to the two school resource officers. So just because we're talking about this tonight doesn't mean that it won't change, maybe with a new agreement in the next month or so. So I'm warning you that you may hear about this again, and it will be maybe different than what you have in front of you tonight. Nonetheless, I'm asking that you take a look at what you have in front of you tonight and see if we can get that approved so that we can kind of formalize the process for this past school year.
I have a question under training. It says there, if you, if there is a specific training that the school district would like them to attend, the training and its expense may be mutually agreed upon. Wouldn't, if the school district wants them to go to a specific training, wouldn't they hold the cost of the whole? I mean, because it's not something the city's requiring.
Yeah, correct. And, and the language talks about the cost being mutually agreeable. That, that might be part of the discussion, that if it's something that really is applicable only to a person within a school, they would bear all or most of the cost than the city would. Typically, the training that our school resource officers are involved in, it's training that's translatable and a value to us as well as the school. So it's going to be pretty rare that just one of us is going to bear that cost.
Okay.
What's the current format? How is it set up? They're not there all day?
No, the middle school, we've got it worked out, the hours worked out to be about one day a week. And then because of the way the shift schedules kind of go, some weeks are heavier than other weeks. It depends on staffing, it depends on, you know, where the, where the school breaks occur during the middle of the school year. But we averaged about that one day a week and, and from everything that I've seen, it worked pretty well.
I'll make the motion that we approve the middle school resource officer agreement.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution Number 2016-25, approving police cooperation intergovernmental agreement.
Again, in September of 2015, I was contacted by Lieutenant Doug Verrick of the Edgerton Police Department, who was attending a master's-level school in police command called the Wisconsin Command College. One of his, basically his capstone project that he decided to undertake was to see if it was feasible in Rock County to do a multi-jurisdictional training group where the small municipalities joined to do joint training, planning, share trainers, share equipment, and work together within, within the training sphere. Dane County has done this pretty successfully, as well as some other counties in the state. Doug thought that this could happen here in Rock County and reached out to all of the municipalities in Rock County, other than the big ones. You know, Janesville and Beloit both have very robust training programs already, as does the Sheriff's Department. The rest of us were kind of doing our own thing. And he received positive feedback from me. I thought it was a great idea, as did four other municipalities. So as we've discussed this throughout the last several months, we've gotten to the point that we've, we have reached some agreements in principle that we will go ahead with this training group. And there's a lot of operational conversations that have happened that I'm, I'm not really involved in, I don't know exactly what that's going to look like. But in order to proceed with this training consortium, it was agreed upon that we would seek a resolution from our respective political bodies to formally stamp this agreement. And so that's what I have in front of you tonight, is to make a decision on adopting this resolution, and then we can- this resolution, and then we can move forward with the group once all five political bodies have approved it.
Do you have any cost attached to this that you know of?
I hesitate simply because it's new and I don't know, but we have training costs that we bear now already. But instead of us bearing the training cost on our own and just doing our own hidden house training, our training cost might be put into the big pot for all five municipalities and their officers to use.
So, you consider that the cost will be nominal by the time it shakes out?
That is my hope. I, you know, I want this to be a net zero decision. I don't want any additional costs unless I get a whole bunch more benefit out of it. At this point, it's looking like it's really going to be a neutral sort of decision fiscally.
I was just kind of curious, because we don't have the township of Milton. Have you spoke with them at all?
I have not. Doug, this was Doug's project, and he did all of that outreach. And so, I don't have any explanation of why some aren't part of this list. These were the five that were interested and decided to pursue it.
I think it's great. I think the more training that we can do with the other governmental bodies, the better off everybody's going to be, especially with all of the things that are happening today with our law enforcement.
Agreed.
I'll make a motion that...
I have a question.
Sorry?
Have you had any preliminary discussions about what training areas you're going to cover, so you know, like, you're in agreement that this is what? Because I know you had talked about diversity and other things and...
And so, all of that is still an ongoing conversation that is kind of happening at the same time as this, you know, as getting all of the agreements done. But, you know, there's, every police officer in the state of Wisconsin needs 24 hours of training every year. This can certainly apply towards that. We have things that we have to do every year, like firearms training, pursuit training, things like that. So, those are kind of the big ones that are required by state statute that we're thinking we can apply through this group. But then those other things are coming up too, like, you know, especially things that would cause a lot of officers from multiple jurisdictions to respond at once. Think active shooter, disaster response, things like that, where if we're all going to be called together to respond to an incident, we should probably train together too. So, those are the big ones. One of the things that I've talked about is the implicit bias piece. It would be nice to bring a trainer in for that. And again, to bear a cost for that for my department alone is pretty expensive, but maybe if we can pool and share the cost of that, there are some advantages to that.
Will you all decide together, I mean, who will be doing trainings? Like, there's some, there's people out there that are really, really good at training, and there are people that are poor at training and maybe less expensive. So, will everybody have? I mean, I just don't want us to get stuck in a group where we're putting money out there and we're not getting the best training. So, will you have some say and influence over what trainers you bring in?
Yeah, absolutely. This is all, all of the voices involved in this are equal. This is not a, oh, we'll just let Edgerton do it, and then we're just along for the ride. This is, and we've already had those discussions where we're coming together and saying, all right, what are our priorities, you know, for these first couple of trainings? What's it going to look like? Feedback and evaluation system after that, find out what worked, how we can improve it. Very robust discussions about that.
Okay, thank you. Linda, you had a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we approve this intergovernmental agreement.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item 10, general items. Any general items? Next meeting will be Tuesday, August 16th at 7:00 PM. And our team building exercise. What is your favorite stress reliever? When you are under stress and you need to relieve the stress, and I see there's faces in the audience that maybe don't understand the question, and we won't, we won't start with Howie. We'll start with Linda. What is your favorite stress reliever? House cleaning, okay. Nancy? Ryan?
Doing games. Relaxing.
Elena?
I yoga.
Oh, nice. I like biking when I get the chance.
Reading.
I was looking at Jeremy and calling you Nancy.
I like to listen to music.
To you, Nancy. The secret life of Maxine, coming out in book form. Jeremy?
He's in the paper.
Dave?
Used to be playing with the dog when he was young, but he's gone now. Get a good book. Sitting back from the monitor.
Dan?
That's right, buddy.
Attorney Schrader. Howie?
Not the dentist?
I don't know. Let's see. Probably say comfort food, but then probably not. Let's see. Well, let's see. Run, play softball, train kids, all those kinds of things. I don't know.
I knew you had a list. Chief of the Fire Department. The Joint Fire Department.
Play my bass guitar.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, we have somebody that's musical next to you.
Skills, you know. I could, guy'd bring my piano along, and maybe we could turn something into that. No, I'm a music guy, so, yeah, either playing or listening.
All right, mayor and elder person reports. All right, so, I have a little report, a little thing to say. One thing that I do want to assure the public that, you know, there's been lots of things in the newspaper, there's lots of things that we simply can't discuss because things happen in closed session, and it's not appropriate, and it doesn't build credibility when we can't follow our own, you know, guidelines. But, anything that the council has done, we always consult with our attorneys, and we always do the very best job to be fair and reasonable, and actually to be kind and compassionate, even if that's really not how it's being portrayed. I personally do not have any type of vendetta against anybody on the city council or in the city administration, city staff, anywhere. I care about all of you, every single one of you, and I care about all of the citizens of the city of Milton, and I want what is in their highest and greatest good all of the time. And every decision I make, it is with the best intentions, and certainly not to be hurtful to anybody, regardless of what anybody else does or what their behavior is. I believe in being caring and compassionate, and I'm fine if people disagree with the decisions that I've made. It's important in a democracy to have spirited conversation in disagreements. However, because there are restrictions about what we can discuss in closed session, there are things that I, you know, I've been personally attacked, and I can't talk about it. I simply can't and I won't. But I do want everybody to understand, and everybody on the council, I believe this is true, has done their very best and have been well-intentioned throughout this whole process. Nobody wants to feel uncomfortable or feel that they have to look at another council members or a coworker's behavior and have to make tough decisions about that. It's messy, it's stressful, and it's uncomfortable, and I acknowledge that. And I understand how stressful it's been on all of the city council members and how stressful and divisive it has been for the community. But we, as a council, passed ordinances, and we worked very hard to have an ad hoc committee, and that ad hoc committee was in direct response to council members' concerns about processes that they wanted improvement on. And we listened, and we developed an ad hoc committee. And then the ad hoc committee made recommendations for the improvements that the city council had requested. And the city council voted on an ethics ordinance to hold themselves to a higher standard because they saw the value in the trust that the voters had placed in them. And the city council put a procedure in place to follow, and it was with great research and with consultation with attorneys that they put these procedures in place. Now, maybe it will turn out that we have to make some changes to those procedures to even make those better, but we are going to follow the process. And I do expect the council to conduct themselves in a respectful manner at all times to people that come to speak here, towards each other, towards the public, towards businesses. We don't want to be getting complaints about how our elected officials are conducting themselves in public because it hurts our community. It hurts our credibility. And when we are on a world stage competing for businesses to come and invest their money and create jobs in our community, and we want this because we are either growing or dying, we want to have processes in place and be a credible governing body. So, people will want to work with us, they'll want to come to plan commission with their ideas, and they'll want to come to city council. So, we will follow through with this process. I thank you all for hanging in there, including Nancy and her husband. I know it's stressful for you, but we will get through it and we will move on. And that's what we do as mature adults that are facing challenges. So, thank you all for hanging in with us. As you know, the city staff have reached out to Black Heart Technical College to bring in training, to help us to be more professional, to be more modern, to look at where are we going and strategically plan for that. This is for the whole city's benefit and for us as elected officials. So, we have those trainings scheduled, and they're coming up. And ever since I was elected mayor, and with the help of city staff, it has been our goal to move the city forward, to be more progressive, to be more professional, and you have come with us. You really have. You've made changes. We've looked at the recommendations of the ad hoc committee. We're doing different things in the city. We have potential development. We have a new Wally Fest. We have the Civil War days. You are making changes and you're moving forward, and we're going to continue to do that even if it is challenging at times. So, that's all I have to say on that. Any elder person reports? Dave? Jeremy? Maxine? Linda?
Yes, I do have a report. I just would like for everyone to know that we are in tourism. We've talked about our 50th anniversary. We're looking at more, of course, as always, less expensive ways to promote everything that we have going on for next year. I am looking forward to working with the budget. And I keep asking everybody, when are we going to start talking about the budget? And it's something that I have also brought up to the committees that I'm on because everybody needs to be cognizant of the fact that everything that we do are, and all of the great things that we did this year, the Civil War days, the Wally Fest, the extra promotions that we did for that, the Fourth of July events that we did. We have chicken barbecue coming up again. All of those events cost money. And so, as great as they are, we still have to be, we have to remember that we're on a budget with everything that we do. And then I was also wondering whether or not we have anybody that has applied for the Parks Commission?
Yes, we have one application for the Parks Commission, and we will close that out, and we will put that on the next agenda.
Oh, yay, awesome. Very good. Oh, and I also just would like to, I know the chief's going to talk about this, but I'm doing the best that I can to get the information about this public forum that we are going to have on Thursday, because I really believe that public safety is something that everyone in the community is interested in. And I hope that all of you other council members are doing the same. That's all.
Thank you. Especially the Public Safety Committee. Nancy?
Yeah, I also have... Yes, sir. I also have the best intentions of Milton for improving Milton and respecting everyone, so I am retaining another legal counsel. So, we'll proceed forward and get this all resolved.
Thanks, Nancy. Ryan?
Just also want to suggest everybody show up for the Public Safety Forum. As many people as possible, the better.
And bring a friend or relative with you. Elena?
And their friend, too.
Staff report, city administrator.
A couple of things. Yes, we have a vacancy on the Parks and Rec Committee, and we also have a vacancy on the Ethics Committee, so those are still out there. I know the Courier ran an item on that. The mayor alluded to the strategic planning sessions. I sent an email out to the group, I think, two weeks ago. Got a response back from most people. We're looking at the first meeting being next week, Thursday, August 11th, at 5:00 PM, and it'll be here. And I'll send out, I'll send out something to kind of formalize that so you can get it in your calendar. We're looking at the 11th, the 18th, and we're skipping a week, and then it'll be the, whatever that is, the 6th, 8th, something like that. Second, second, I think. Second, yeah. So, yeah. So, that'll start next week. I'll send, I'll send it out. It's on the calendar. It's on the calendar, too. Yeah.
Chief of the Joint Fire Department?
Nothing to report.
Chief of Police?
Lots of public engagement happening over the last week or so. We had both Mike Chesmore and I, and then Joe Fox joined us later in the day. Weren't able to staff the law enforcement tent at the Rock County Fair and got to hand out a lot of stickers and pencils and things, and so that was a really good time. Tonight is National Night Out, and I chose to be here because I had agenda items, but I have Joe Fox down in Beloit participating in the Sheriff's Department's National Night Out events. I hope that there's some people from Milton who also attended that because that's an awesome event, and glad we had somebody there. And then, again, as Linda mentioned, our Public Safety Forum is coming up on Thursday night, and hope to see some people there as well with some of the things that they want to discuss with us about maybe what some of their priorities are regarding safety in the community.
Thank you. City Clerk, Deputy Treasurer?
So, as you're probably aware, the election is coming up next Tuesday. Today, we did all the public testing of the election equipment, and it all worked, just as we had hoped. The election officials also all came in and got their training, so they are ready to go. They've just been, I just want to say that they've been a stellar group. There are so many changes that are going on with election law, and they come with a great attitude every time, ready to learn, like, okay, on this election, what are the rules this time? So, they're ready to go, and I think Milton's ready for its election on Tuesday.
Director of Public Works?
Let's see, barricades on Madison Avenue should be gone tomorrow afternoon, the ones from the...
Yay!
Not the ones on West Madison Avenue. That won't be done until school starts for the water main. Water main at Shilberg Park is pretty much done except for testing it. Let's see, well, too, they're putting a siding on it now, so they hope to be done by end of August. Library construction's still going pretty well. Let's see, the mud run is two weekends from now, and also a lot of football and soccer practice are starting this week, so the parks are going to get busy again.
And lots of traffic. Lots of traffic.
Probably a lot of traffic between 4:00 and 8:00 o'clock at night for the parks, so...
Okay, Director of the Libraries, not here. Who's next? Finance? Finance?
Next week, Tuesday, we have our rating call for the 2016 B bond, so just finalizing our packet to give Moody's and trying to get our bond rating reaffirmed at an A1.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
So, motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor? All those opposed? We're adjourned, see you guys Thursday, if not...